All right. We are going to go ahead and get started. Hi, everyone. I would quickly like to -- I want to kick things off just to thank everyone for being here. I want to give you an overview of what we're doing here today. This is an Economic Development Committee public hearing. And the purpose is to review two public-private partnership projects in the Short North. The Department of Development has submitted the legislation to City Council, and they will both be up for first reading on Monday. Just to give you a sense of what the public process is today, right now, as a public hearing, as I said, they will be on first reading on the agenda on Monday. And of course, City Council will consider any testimony on Monday. And then, the following week, they'll be at second reading, and that's when the vote on final passage will be. So I want everyone to be clear about the opportunities for public input. Now, before we start here with the Buddles and High Ordinance 1231-2016, I want to just ask a quick question about speaker slips. Not everybody filled out the project that they're here to talk about. So by a show of hands, if you don't mind, is anyone here to talk about the Buddles and High project? Okay. And did you fill out a speaker slip?
Yes.
What was your name?
Diane.
Okay, great. All right. Well, then, I want to -- before I start, I actually do want to thank my staff. James Carmine and Kelsey Ellingson have done really great work in getting everything ready for today. I appreciate that so much. Thank you for your outreach to the community and to get everyone here today. So we will now start. This is going to be run like a zoning hearing, so a very familiar process to any of you who've been to zoning hearings. We'll start with the Buddles and High project. Economic Development Agreement is contained within Ordinance 1231-2016. So Director Steve Shoney of the Department of Development is here. Steve, can you please give an overview for us?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Cinziano. First of all, I want to echo your comments about your team in terms of their professionalism and help in putting this together and coordinating this opportunity for comment. I also want to compliment my own team. Mark Lundeen, in particular, along with Michelle Larson, have been working very hard to try and put together what we think is an effective pair of economic development agreements. Speaking of the Buddles and High project, let me just highlight a couple of things from our perspective. We think the keys to this project and why this project is good for the city are, number one, that it adds a component of office space to the Short North that is critical. As we talk to businesses and community members in the Short North, one of the main concerns for the Short North really is encouraging daytime retail businesses, retail businesses that are not hospitality, food and beverage businesses, to be able to be there and be viable. So it's the art galleries and the clothing shops and those kind of businesses. And that really is about adding foot traffic throughout the day and throughout the week. And so, one of the key strategies for us is to encourage office development within the Short North. There is no available Class A office space today in the Short North. The 60,000 square feet that was built as part of the Pizzuti project is entirely full. It is full with over half of those tenants are new to the city of Columbus. Those that aren't new to the city are growing, and it has been a great demonstration for how we can encourage that kind of activity within the Short North. The other thing that that project does is it adds parking in an area that is critically needed. There will be a short-term displacement of some parking, but when you combine the project that's actually going to happen on the Buddles and High site with the garage that the wood company is going to be building over at Lincoln, we're very excited about the project. So with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Mark Lundeen to run through some of the details of the project.
Thank you, Councilmembers. The 711 North High Street project contains 75,000 square feet of Class A commercial office. There's retail restaurant space on the ground floor and event space on the top floor of the building. In conjunction with this, wood companies are developing what I'll call the Lincoln Lot, which is going to be a small amount of residential, 15 to 17 units facing Lincoln, and then parking garage behind it that's approximately 240 spaces, 125 of which will be publicly available for a 30-year period. I just want to quickly run through the economic development component or economic components of the deal. Again, the city has owned -- both of these parking lots were purchased in the late 1980s through the Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Fund, and both of them were to supply public parking to the burgeoning retail businesses in the Short North. I think it's appropriate that they're then both being used to increase the supply of parking for those same, in many cases, those same businesses in the Short North. The financial components around the wood deal is that we will supply up to $10,000 of space to construct the public parking spaces, as well as the land that we own at 711 North High Street. Over a 30-year term, these spaces will be available to the public, and the owners will repay the city $1.65 million through a special assessment on the properties.
Yep.
I just called you representative. Councilmember Cinziano, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the department. Just a quick one. How normal are these deals now? I know you've talked about a little bit of the need, and particularly in this community, responding to the need. Just curious how often or the history the city has in putting these kind of public-private partnerships, looking out for a public interest, adding the parking. Still relatively new, something we have a history with, something that's continuing to evolve.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember. You know, we've done two other public-private partnership deals in the Short North in which public parking spaces were provided. The Pizzuti deal that Director Shoney referenced, as well as the Hubbard and High Parking Garage Residential and Retail Project. Relative to public-private partnerships in the city, you know, we've done more than 100 public-private partnerships. Obviously, not all of them involve parking. Some are road construction or utility projects that enable private development. But, you know, we leverage $24 for every dollar the city invests in those public-private partnerships, and, you know, we feel like it's one of the major competitive advantages our city has relative to our peer cities.
Thank you. So I'd like to invite the project developer up. Mark Wood, come on up. And Mark, if you could take a few minutes at the microphone here to -- if you could take a few minutes to explain the project. And do you have -- is there a button to press to make sure it's on? Do you see a button?
No.
No, it just goes on? Okay. Good. There you go.
Thank you, Councilmembers, for letting us present today. We are excited to be in position to develop what will become an iconic structure known for sophisticated architecture and dynamic programming in the center of the most vibrant section of the Short North in partnership with Schiff Capital. When we first approached the city about developing the site, we had a vision of developing residential on the site. Once we started talking to the city, Director Shoney and Mark Lundeen, we were encouraged to consider doing a Class A office building. They thought it would be better for the city and for the neighborhood, and we agreed with their assessment. When Pizzuti proposed their Meridian Hotel in the Joseph Office Building, I advocated for the development for two reasons. One, the proposed uses were a great fit for the neighborhood. Both the boutique hotel and the Class A office building would support the businesses along the High Street corridor. These businesses provide the vibrancy that makes the district so special. Second, we knew they would execute their development with a high-level design and commitment to quality. Our development will consist of approximately 86,000 square feet of office space, 9,000 square feet of restaurant space, including a one-of-a-kind rooftop experience with a retractable roof that will truly be special not only to the Short North, but to the entire city. In addition, we will be constructing approximately 90 parking spaces within the structure of the office building. The site currently has about 45 public parking spaces. Part of our Development Agreement with the city is that we will be committing to construct a parking garage at the intersection of Lincoln and Pearl Street with approximately 245 total parking spaces, of which 125 will be dedicated for public use. The parking garage, along with the parking garage at our Hubbard Park Place Development that is currently under construction, and the parking spaces that are being developed within the structure of the office development, will satisfy our office parking needs. The wood companies have been developing along the High Street corridor for nearly 35 years. We are passionate about the neighborhood and pride ourselves on being thoughtful on how our developments helped shape the neighborhood, whether that be by the merchants we recruit to our storefronts, even if they are not the highest-paying businesses. The commitment to architectural details almost always drive up our construction costs, but that will stand the test of time, and more practical considerations such as developing strategies to help meet parking demands. Like the Pizzuti developments, we are committing to an exceptionally high level of design. When we went through the Victorian Village Commission for Design Approval of the project, for the project, we were told by commission members that they appreciated that we had paid equal amount of attention to the sides and rear of the building as we did the front of the building. And like the Pizzuti developments, our project will bring daytime traffic to the neighborhood that helps maintain the sustainability of the retail corridor. Equally important, our highest parking demand for the project would be weekday daytime needs when parking is more available, and the excess parking we are developing will be available to help meet evening parking demand when parking is at its tightest. The parking garage will be -- that we will construct at the intersection of Lincoln and Pearl will nearly triple the public parking that is currently available on the city parking lot. The development represents a fantastic win-win opportunity for the development team, the city, and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Hold one moment. Do you have any questions, Michael? Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I now like to move to public comment. And as I referenced at the opening of the hearing, this will go like a zoning hearing. I did not detail what that meant. For those of you who haven't been to a zoning committee hearing, so the department always presents first, which occurred, then the project developer, and then we open it up for public comment. And we have multiple speaker slips, which I'm glad to see. And each testimony is limited to three minutes, and there is an opportunity for department or developer response after those three-minute testimonies. So for those of you who haven't been to a zoning hearing, that's how it goes. All right. So we will start with Diane Lambert and Betsy Pandora are both here to talk on this project. So Ms. Lambert, you submitted your slip first. Would you like to be first? Come on up, please. Yep, come on up to the podium. And please state, when you get there, your name as well as your address.
Okay. Diane Lambert, and the address I'm at is 691 North High Street, which is right next to the Buddles Lot. First, I'd like to say, you know, thanks for giving us the opportunity to come and speak and say our piece on this. I'm excited about the development and stuff that is happening in the Short North. I've lived and worked there for past 30 years, and I've seen a lot of change. Parking has always been an issue in the area ever since I've lived there. So when I found out, you know, that they were building a tall, it was originally going to be 11-story office building, I was like, where are all these people going to park? You know, we currently, I have, where I work, it's 5,000 square feet. We have 13 spaces behind our building. Our floor gets five. So at one time, we had 20 people working there. Only five could park in the back, and the other 15 had to find places to park, which four years ago, it was doable, but still, at certain times of the day, if you left, you weren't going to get a parking spot nearby. You could go and hunt and look for it, and you could possibly find it or not. So my concern is the parking variances that have been given to, not only to the wood companies, you know, development, but all of the restaurants that come in, they all get variances. And this has increased the problem that we have for parking. So the need for parking has always been there, and I think the city is well aware of it. But I don't know where all these office workers are going to park. Now, I know they did say that they're going to get a parking garage, but by code, I believe I had seen a number, they need something like 300 parking spaces to, you know, have the restaurants and the office space. So even though they get 88, they got a variance to have 88, then you have the parking garage that gives 125. Where's the other 100 and some people going to park? So, and the argument is, well, they've built other garages. But I guess I want to know how much more development is happening in the area, because who's going to park in the garage that's at the convention center? Are they going to build more buildings close by, and then those people are going to park? So then, we're still at the same spot where we're at now. So that's one thing. And then, another thing is the massing of the buildings. One of the things I loved about the Short North was everything was beautiful and, you know, all three stories to five stories, give or take a couple buildings, the Bolinger Tower. But I just thought that was great. It looked nice. And now they're changing the landscape of it, and they're not keeping within the guidelines that were originally given. You know, there are guidelines that are in law and that you are, we have to abide by. I do in our building. So why -- (bell) Anyways, thank you.
That buzzer is very annoying. So I want to -- your question about, and you can sit, that's fine. Your question about the parking specifically. Mark, if you wouldn't mind coming up to help answer my question here and follow up to Ms. Lambert's point. As the developer, you're having to consider how you're going to park your project, or you won't be able to sell your space, right?
Absolutely.
So I'm wondering what you think the solution is.
Yeah, no, absolutely. You know, and just on one point about how many parking spaces are required, one of the things that drives that count is the fact that we have two different uses in the building. One is a restaurant, and one is the offices. You know, the restaurant needs, it may be dinner-only restaurants, and so the, you know, I think that drives almost 100 parking spaces or slightly more of the count that's, you know, by kind of a suburban code standard. So if you took those off, you know, really, we're talking about more like 250 in terms of daytime parking for suburban office requirements. We're going to have about 90 onsite. We have a 240-car garage, 245-car garage that we're developing, which will help support that parking demand. But then also, our Hubbard Park Place Development, which is a block away, has about 145 parking spaces, and that project is almost entirely all residential. And we've had a great, great practice of sharing daytime and nighttime parking kind of, where those two needs for offices and residential parking are at different times of the day. The offices use them during the week, during business hours, and the residents come home. Our development, where North Star Cafe is a perfect example of that, where we have about 10,000 square feet of office space and 24 residential residences, and there's a 24-car parking garage. And probably the time that the parking garage is most empty is 5:30 to 6:30, where you have this transition between the time that people are coming home from their jobs, who work other places in the office, people are on their way home. So it's been a great way to kind of match up the scarcity of parking and make it work on a 24/7 basis. And that's what really works well here with this site, is the fact that we're uniquely positioned, that we own other parcels and are developing other garages within a block of this site. So it really, I think, works very, very well. We wouldn't develop if we didn't think we have place to support the office parking needs, because that's a practical issue for us in leasing space.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Wood. Do you have any questions? Betsy Pandora, if you could come on up and remember three minutes.
And address and all that. Yep. Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmembers Brown and Cinziano, for having this hearing today. My name is Betsy Pandora. I'm the Executive Director of the Short North Alliance. Our address is 21 East Fifth Avenue. The Short North Alliance is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to nurture the Short North Arts District as a vibrant, creative, and inclusive community and leading arts destination. We serve over 350 businesses and hundreds of property owners of High Street within the Short North Arts District. And I think you're well aware of how the Short North has truly grown into a major point of pride for not just Columbus, but the region, both for the economic benefits, the tourism attraction, the cultural attraction, and an incredible small business community that contributes well to our city. As you also may know, the Short North Arts District historically has had some parking challenges. And continuously, the number-one concern that we hear from our business community, just like Diane voiced a moment ago, is parking. I'm here to speak actually about both of these projects, and my comments apply to both. Both of the projects being discussed here today, I think, will help us to address that challenge by creating additional public parking resources, which really are vital to the continued success of our dynamic small business community and are important to the impression that millions of annual visitors have of the Short North and of Columbus when they come through the neighborhood. Both projects contain office uses as well, which, as Director said and the Alliance agrees with, will add hundreds of new workers to the neighborhood, who we think really will add that daytime foot traffic that is so critically important to the success of our small business community and the continued success of the Short North. The Short North Parking Study, which was conducted in 2014, outlined how public-private partnerships like this are a very important strategy to increase the public parking supply. And not including public parking in these projects would, I think, be a major miss for our community and a major miss for the neighborhood. Additionally, we've also had the benefit now of seeing firsthand how these truly work in the Short North. Both Hubbard Development and the Joseph Hotel and Office Building have similar shared parking models like this, which really are very successful in providing necessary parking as well as providing needed resources for visitors and employees and folks that are visiting the district. Thank you so much for giving these projects their due consideration for approval, and we appreciate your thoughtful support of their importance to fostering the success of the Short North and the further economic development of Columbus. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Pandora. Seeing no more public comments on the Buddles and High project, Ordinance 1231-2016, unless the department would like to add anything else, we'll move on to the next project? Okay. So the next project for which we're taking public comment is the White Castle project. It's Ordinance 1213-2016. And I'd like to start by, again, kicking it to the Department of Development to give a departmental overview.
Thank you, Councilmembers. The redevelopment of the White Castle and the city-owned parking lot at 987 North High Street is going to include 12,000 square feet of Class A commercial office, 10,000 square feet of retail, including the reconstruction of White Castle's signature restaurant, and 98 multifamily units, and a 206-car parking garage with 104 of those spaces being public. The financial overview is structured very similarly to the previous project discussed. There will be a $10,000 per public parking space contribution, not to exceed $1 million. And the city will also provide the public parking lot, which, again, was bought with Neighborhood Commercial Revitalization Fund dollars in the 1980s to provide public parking for the neighborhood and small businesses. Over time, the developer will repay $1.95 million, 30-year special assessment on the property. And again, you know, we're excited about this project to provide additional public parking in the neighborhood. The other thing to note with both of these projects, part of the Economic Development Agreement is to make a $10,000 donation to C-Bus to help continue to fund C-Bus and make that successful. Also, this site is currently home to a COGO station. And while it will be removed and relocated during construction, it will be reinstalled. And so you'll have an option of not only busing, but also biking from this development.
If I can add one other thing that applies to both projects that I don't think we highlighted in either of them. The way we're structuring this with the repayment coming through a special assessment, we're actually really, if you can get excited about something like a special assessment, we're excited about it. The importance of that is that this is literally the most secure way that the city can have of structuring payment like this. So what happens is it's a commitment by the developers that gets entered as a special assessment on their taxes. So if something should go wrong with either of these projects, the city is ahead of any other creditors that goes in as a tax lien on the project. And so we're very secured in how we've structured this, because we do take that very seriously as we look at these projects.
Can you tell me why, tell us why those dollar amounts? Why the $1 million in city capital funds, and why the $1.95 million in payback for the special assessment?
Yeah. The $10,000 per space contribution is really, represents less than half of what it would cost to build structured parking space. And, you know, we feel that the, you know, the mix of the value of the property as well as that contribution, you know, really only pays for a portion of what it costs to construct these spaces. As far as the paybacks, you know, we looked at a number of factors. You know, what the parking, public parking lots currently are making in revenue, and how much they cost to operate on a yearly basis. We looked at the income taxes that were potentially generated from the commercial office. And again, with that, I think we have a very good estimate based on the Pizzuti Office Building just down the street. And we were able to analyze each tenant in that building and determine whether they were new employees to the city of Columbus. I also have a pretty good estimate from the companies on their salaries and wages. And so, you know, those factors really were what led to the calculation behind the special assessment.
And how much, in looking at the Joseph Office project, how much new revenue did come to the city?
It was 52% of the employees in the building were new to the city of Columbus, and the average annual wage was over $85,000 a year.
Thank you to the department. And next, I'd like to invite the project developer up to give a project overview. Mr. Boar, thank you for coming to council. If you could state your name and address, the address of the, who you're representing.
Well, thank you very much, Councilmembers. I'm Doug Boar, the CEO of Boar Properties. My address is 845 North High Street. So I live less than a block from this project, from both of the projects. So we're here, we're very excited about our project. We're here with our partners from White Castle today that we've been working with for well over two years on this project. When we began developing this with our partners, we immediately took a look at this site and saw that we were contiguous to a very narrow parking lot that was owned by the city. It was only 60 feet wide. And in developing our our project, we could develop it by ourselves, but if we did, we would leave the city with a landlocked 42-space parking garage, parking lot that wouldn't be able to be utilized for any other purpose than a 42-space parking lot for the rest of its life. So we immediately went to the Development Department and approached the Development Director and his assistant, or his aides. And we've been, worked with them for well over a year to develop this, develop this vehicle, the EDA that Mr. Lundin has talked about. And we are, we are very, very excited that we're going to be able to provide public parking on our, on our site, that it will be two and a half times what was previously there. We will be paying the city back the money over, over a 30-year period, as Mark said. And we have, we're very excited about it. As far as the process goes, we've had numerous meetings with both, both public meetings with residents and private meetings with area merchants and residents. We've gone through seven Victorian Village Commission meetings. We've had three different versions of this building in different sizes and different shapes. And finally, in March, we received our certificate of appropriateness from the, from the VVC for, for the building as well as for the building variances. Those variances will be heard a week from Tuesday at, at the Building Department. And we, we worked very, very hard to try to make sure this building fit in the neighborhood, is going to be an iconic structure. Our partners at White Castle think they're, intend for their restaurant to be the flagship restaurant in the White Castle chain, one where all slider aficionados will be able to call home. And we expect to, to do, to, it to be a really cool place. You know, as Mark said, we, we have the White Castle Restaurant, we have 8,000 square feet of additional retail, 12,000 square feet of Class A office space, 98 residential units. And we also have committed, from the Boer Family Foundation and the Ingram Family Foundation, each $25,000 for a total of $50,000 for a matching fund grant for the, with the Short North Alliance to do a public artwork on, on the front of the building. And we're deep in, in work with Betsy and her art committee that my wife sits on. And they're enjoying that very much. But we're going to have a cool public art, art space, and it's going to be a spectacular building. Mark said his building is iconic. I think ours will be too. So we're really adding what I believe will be, will be great. We are, we are completely planned on this project. We intend to start following the event season. So as soon as the Duda Parade is over, we will be, we will be breaking ground, and we hope to have this building finished by January 1st of 2018. So, thank you.
Okay. One question. Do you have interest in, I meant to ask this to Mr. Wood as well, but do you have interest yet in the office portion? Any tenants who've expressed interest?
We do not. We have, we have retained a firm to start, to start doing that. There is tremendous demand. But again, and I'm sure Mark's having the same, same issue, they like to see ground being broken, and you can promise a date so people can make firm plans. So I think as soon as we get, get the foundation coming out of the ground, we would expect to have, to have, to have leasing activity quickly.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boer.
Yes, thank you.
We are going to move to public comment now. And I'm going to do these in the order in which they were submitted. And a reminder that there's three minutes for testimony. And then if the developer or the city would like to offer response, we'll also make sure we time that for three minutes. So I'd like to start with Bill Wood.
Councilperson Brown, Councilmember Stenziano, my name is Bill Wood. I live at 41 West Second Avenue. I am next door to the White Castle project. Both Mr. Wood and Mr. Boer have both stated that there is a tremendous demand for the buildings that they are building. Everybody wants to live in the Short North. And yet you are putting out economic development agreements with these contractors who are basically sold out before the buildings are even built. And the city is providing my tax dollars, millions of dollars of mine and your tax dollars to these people where they're banks. They don't need our money. They have already told you that there is a tremendous demand for this property. All the apartments will be gone before they're done building them. All the commercial space will be gone before. Pazuti's is full. No space available. Wood, it will be full before he's finished with it. And the city is giving them a million to a million and a quarter dollars, plus the property, plus 15-year tax abatements. You're throwing, and the people who are living here, who come in here, the millennials who are coming in here, as soon as they have kids, they move. Why? Because we don't have any cities. Because you are giving away our tax dollars that should be going to our schools. Have these people who are doing these developments, rather than you giving them a million dollars, demand that they build these things and that they provide money. They're giving you $10,000 to the C-Bus. Have them give a million dollars to the city public school so we have public schools, so we have people who want to live here for a long time, not people who want to live for, for two and a half years until they have a baby, like all the people on our street. If they don't move out after two and a half years of having a kid, they're sending them to the Columbus School for Girls, where they're paying $35,000 a year for them. This is not right. You people have to get these EDAs out. The Short North is not a blighted area. You should be giving money to Wyland Park, to Franklinton. They're the people that need the money for the development, not the Short North. People are dying to get in this area right now. Don't give these developers this money. Give it to the areas that need it. Thank you. I know I'm not done. Oh.
How many seconds did he have?
The last time it went off, I ran away. So I'm willing to stay. If you have any questions, I'm willing to stay.
Do you want 30 seconds?
Do I want 30 seconds? Everything that we have always been told at all the Victorian Village Commission meetings and the, what I've seen from when I was talking to Mark Lundin and other people at the, at the, my brain just went blank, is that the reason why it's being done this way is because that's the way it's always been done. And I say, when I moved here in 1986, it'll be 30 years in November that I've lived in the same house next to that White Castle. 30 years ago, my neighbors would not come down. My friends would not come down to visit me. Now they won't come down to visit me because they can't find a parking space. And I'm on the Committee for the Short, for the Duda Parade. And we meet once a month at the Short North Tavern. Our members who are not living in the Short North won't come anymore because they can't find any parking spaces. And you're going to build these enormous things, which the, the city sits down, and the city and the developer put this together.
I'm sorry. You're now over your 30 seconds.
My time's up. I appreciate the extra time. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. I do want to ask the, the department to, to comment on the abatements. Mr. Wood is, is right that we have a problem with our, that our public school system needs more money, right? And I do want to understand from the Department of Development how you see these abatements as a win for our city, or not. But I'm assuming you do, or you wouldn't be recommending them.
So, thank you, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Stenziano. A couple things on Mr. Wood's comments, as it relates to this, the financial deal related to these two projects, separate from the abatements. It's all about the parking. We are buying the provision of excess parking in these two projects. That is what we were doing. That is what the exchange is. It is not, it has not gotten to the point where, in our analysis, the revenue from parking in the Short North, nor in downtown, frankly, at this point, although downtown, it's closer, will justify private sector development of parking on its own. So if we are going to have additional structured parking, which is the only way you're going to get additional parking of any sort into these parking-constrained neighborhoods, it's going to take public investment. So that's the, the cash financial piece of the transaction. When you talk about the abatement, you have to divide it into two different sides. There's abatement for the office portion of the projects, and then there's abatement for the residential. Let me speak first to the abatement for the office portion of the project. We are competing every single day with our office product for, against two things, three things. One is, we're competing against our competitive set of, of communities around the country. Two, we're competing against our competitors here within the region, the Dublins and the New Albinis and the Grove Cities and the Hilliards. And three, we're competing against retail, or not retail, residential. We are competing for the use of space because the return on residential is frankly higher than the return on office, and it's easier to finance a residential building because the banks understand it better. You're not dependent on one or, or a small number of tenants. It's a lot easier to do residential development. So, and in this case, we're offering not 15-year, not 100%, but 75% 10-year abatement on the office portions of the project. And that is competing for that job creation because those tenants that we're looking to ultimately attract by building these buildings, they have the option of being in other places where they can get a lower net rent because of the abatement. Now, we are selling a premium product, and we don't apologize for that. But at some point, you can only be so premium and have the project be economically viable to bring jobs to the area. On the residential abatement side, the Short North CRA is in place. It is a, it is a, something that any residential property...
Have you ever been buzzed before?
I have not ever been buzzed before.
You're awesome, huh?
You saw the look of shock on my face.
I do want you to finish what you're saying about residential abatements, though.
You asked me two questions, so does that mean I got six minutes? The, on residential abatement, so from a technical standpoint, that is not a decision point for the city at this point. I will say what we're doing, and this has been reported on this week, I think, this week and last week, the city is going through the process of doing our first, the first in anyone's memory. Mr. Dorian has been out, so we haven't been able to ask the definitive question if, has it ever been done, which is when you want to ask that, you ask Mr. Dorian. The first that we know of study of the city's incentive policies as it relates to property tax incentives in particular, to understand the implications of a larger question about how much incentivizing do we need to do to support the kind of development that we want to have. Mr. Wood is asking a very valid question, and it's a question that we're seeking to answer. But we want to answer it in a way that is data-driven, that is based on analysis by outside experts, and really gets us to how do we do the best job of having strong communities and a competitive office market at the same time.
Okay. Do you have questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to Mr. Wood's question of, we're just doing this because it's the way it's always been done. What I heard is, not exactly, that we do have a process, but we are providing different incentives than we have done before because there is a different market out there, or there are different factors in play.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Stenziano, Madam Chair. I think that's an accurate characterization. Thank you.
One more point on the residential abatement, and then we will move on to the next witness. You referenced the CRA being in place for the residential abatement. Can you just briefly explain exactly what that means for people viewing? Because not everybody understands the origin and the state and how it's all intermingled.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Stenziano. The, and I'm going to try this, and then Mark will kick me where I go off or jump in. The Community Reinvestment Area program is a program that is governed by state law that sets out that municipalities may offer abatements on residential property in neighborhoods that have historically had blight. When the CRA was set up, the Short North certainly fit that. That system has been set up for residential as a 15-year, 100% abatement. There is an application process to the city, but it is a very kind of ministerial application process. It's not an application process whereby we have a lot of ability to negotiate different rates and terms, which we have much more of on the commercial side because we're using a different set of abatement tools on the commercial side.
Okay, thank you. Now, I would like to move on to Ms. Joyce Martin. If you could please come to the microphone and state your name and your address, and of course, if you're representing anyone other than yourself.
My name is Joyce Martin, and I live at 54 West Second Avenue. I really want to thank Councilmember Brown and Councilmember Stenziano for making this opportunity available. This is an important project, and we appreciate the attention being given to it. I want to talk about two topics today, and they aren't mentioned in the Economic Development Agreement, but they're in there. The first one is conflict of interest, and the second one is sole source, no competitive bidding. First, conflict of interest. It's important to point out at the beginning that a conflict of interest is in the potential for it to occur. We always talk about it after someone has violated and is in trouble with the ethics office. But at this point, we're talking about it being a potential conflict of interest, and those are not allowed either. So I am not suggesting that anyone here has violated the conflict of interest laws, but rather the setup allows for it to be a valid complaint about the EDA. First of all, the whole document contemplates that Boer and the city are business partners, particularly in developing the parking spaces and the parking garage. This is going to be an ongoing 30-year relationship, and yet the city has to make decisions on permits and variances and already on tax abatements. So the conflict arises because it will be hard, if not impossible, for the city not to deal favorably with the governmental needs that the Boer project has. And again, it has not occurred, and it may never occur, but there is a huge potential, when you're a partner with someone, to give them special treatment. Second, if you look at the financial commitments, they're very favorable to the Boer Properties, Inc. They provide for zero interest on the loan that they're paying back. I think that's right. I didn't see any interest in that loan. And already, utility companies and surveyors are moving wires and readying the property without a signed agreement. This suggests that the project is going forward, just as Mr. Boer said today, that as soon as they can break ground, they will provide additional things to all of you. So we've got to hear a conflict of interest, and always it goes with the city as the person who has to deal with the conflict of interest, because they're the ones who can act favorably or not. Sole source contractor, government favors competitive bidding. It makes sense. It's good business. You get the lowest price for something you're selling, you're buying, and the highest price for something you're selling. Here, you can get a sole source for an emergency or for special expertise that the sole source has. Neither of those apply here. Anyone can deal with a parking lot. It can be in different ways, but for selling it, anyone can take possession and do something with that property. Similarly, can I just finish my sentence? Why would they have a sole source builder increase parking demand by adding several hundred people to the, to the project? That they are going to have demand for parking. So you lose 46 spots. You bring in all of these people, retailers, commercial, residents, of course, who have parking needs. And the end result is, you actually have fewer spots than you had if you'd kept your 46, or... or allowed them to go to someone who would be not demanding. For instance, if the city built its own public parking lots, you'd get the parking, you wouldn't have the additional demand in that area. So final thought, I'd like to suggest that these comments do not require a response from the developer. Sole source and conflict of interest are not the concerns of the developer, they're the concerns of the city. And good government implies that we use sole source very, very rarely and also that we avoid conflict of interest where someone can see a possibility of unfair treatment to non-bidders. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I do have, because I heard what you said in your testimony, I do actually have a question of the developer. So I understand that you asked that the city respond, but you mentioned something about work being done on city land already.
Just as a neighbor, we see these people around and they are doing actual physical things, yes.
Okay. Is there any kind of breaking ground that's happened on city land? Surveyors? Okay, okay. Thank you. Michael.
Ms. Martin, before you go, so you raised a question about the conflict of interest, but the city, as I asked before, enters into public-private partnerships all the time. Why do you think this one's different than the 100-plus that they've done around the city in the past?
I'm not analyzing the other ones. You've made a decision on each of them, whether you can be fair to everyone who bids or who doesn't bid and use a sole source. But on this one, the favorable terms that are included in the document, as well as the ongoing relationship, it's not something you're buying and you walk away a year from now. You have a relationship with that and that's what partners have. So our concern is that this conflict of interest will grease all the skids so that the Victorian Village approves, so the zoning board approves, so everything falls in line for this particular developer and that at the end, it looks as if you're helping your business partners out.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. I want to kick it to Director Shoney to comment on both of those. I may have some follow-up questions, but you can just comment generally if you want.
So, thank you, Madam Chair, Councilmember Stenziano. I mentioned earlier the special assessment and that's key because in reality, we won't have an ongoing business relationship. Whether they build this building or not, we still get paid, once they agree to put the special assessment in place. So there is no, literally whatever happens on the property is immaterial to us from a financial standpoint. The special assessment does not change based on the usage of the garage. It does not change whether the building is built.
So if nothing gets built, or if for some reason, BOR Properties decides to sell it to another developer?
It is a commitment that runs with the property. It stays on the property and it is secured as a tax lien if it should not be paid. So it's a concern that we had. It's something that, that's one of the reasons that we like this mechanism. It has a high degree of security and it does remove that potential conflict of interest. And that's something that we share the concern about because it is important to us that we have the public trust. As it relates to the lack of competitive bidding, frankly, on both of these projects, neither of these projects were competitively bid. Dealing with the BOR project specifically, and then if you'll indulge me, I'll talk a little bit if I have time, to talk a little bit about the Wood project. On this project, as Mr. BOR outlined, it's a very thin lot. That is, I think Mr. BOR said 45 feet wide. The properties to the north are all historic buildings that the city has no interest in seeing torn down in order to make room for a larger project. So if that lot is going to be anything other than a 45-spot surface lot, it had to be with the developer, with the owner of the White Castle property. So that is why we went with that. There was no, really no other practical option in terms of another purchaser of that facility who could give us what we want, which is more parking. As it relates to the Wood project, similar site constraints in terms of the geometry of the site. Additionally, the Wood Companies actually has a deed restriction on that property because when we bought the property, back in the 80s, it was from the Wood Companies. That limits, I think, 30% of that lot that we bought from them as it can only be used for parking if the city uses it or while the city has it and sells it. So really, the only group that could develop that site vertically was the Wood Companies and so that's why we did not do that and we worked out what we thought was a fair deal. I think Mr. Lundin has some additional-
I do just want to clarify one additional thing that we haven't talked about. Public parking covenant is recorded with both of these properties, so when the director is talking about the financial security of the special assessment, he's merely referencing that financial security. The public parking covenant is recorded with the deed for the property and is the mechanism that is used to ensure that it remains public parking for 30 years. So it does, you know, there are restrictions on both of the owners that they have to keep this parking available for 30 years and that's the mechanism that we use to do that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to the next public commenter, Ms. Kathy Reinhardt. Kathy here?
Yep.
And Kathy, if you could say your name, your address and-
My name is Kathy Reinhardt. I live at 51 West Second Avenue, sort of across and a little down from where the White Castle is going to be. The concern that I bring, I mean, we all know that the development's going to happen. We know we're still, the numbers, the math doesn't make sense on parking to most of us average laypeople who see that, yes, we're going to get three times the parking, but the demand of the building creates so much more than that. And I know one of my neighbors is going to talk about those exact numbers. One of the concerns that a few, that I've talked to, a few of the small business owners that are literally right across the street and right next to where the development's going to be are worried about, in the EDA on page three, number E, it talks about building the garage and how they have, when the transfer is done, it's their property, they have two years to then build the garage. So there is concern that we go two years without those 42 spots that are there now, let alone waiting for the garage to be built. And one of the concerns that we have is just the wording in that and trying to get that to happen sooner because a lot of those businesses right across the street are looking forward to, yes, the parking garage and at the same time, but if there are two years without that parking for their current customers, that they will, you know, not be able to survive with that. So that was my main concern on that section.
Thank you so much. Mr. BOR, could you shed a little light on the, and if you could come to the microphone, sorry, or whomever from BOR Properties, but could you shed a little light on the construction timeline? Will it take two years to construct the garage?
Our current, thank you very much, Councilmembers. Our current timeline shows us completing the building in an 18 to 21-month period. So we would expect to start, as I said, the 1st of July and be done in the wintertime of 2018.
So you would plan to take fewer than two years?
Absolutely. If we can do it quicker, we will do it quicker and we'll open the parking garage as soon as we can. You know, our goal is to generate revenue as quickly as we can and we want to provide the parking. But we, of course, have to build the building on the existing parking lot to build the building, so we have to close down the parking.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
It's actually not for Mr. BOR, but since Ms. Pandora is here, you know, how has the Short North Alliance worked with businesses when they have had concerns, or maybe it's something we can talk to later? It's not my committee, but just curious that, I know businesses constantly have that concern for a variety of things that happen. What steps proactively does Short North Alliance take?
So we're no stranger to construction in the district and certainly, this is a unique situation in that the construction will also involve the loss of 40-some parking spaces in this lot and how many parking spaces are in the middle slot? Forty in both. So, one, we have the incredible benefit now in this situation of having opportunities for public parking in the new Goodell parking garage that has opened, which has 800-plus parking spaces in it in fairly close proximity to the Wood Project. Two, we, and this is a recommendation of the Short North Parking Study, are working with private property owners that have excess parking. Junior Achievement is one, the IEBW building is another, where we think we can not only collaborate with the development teams to get their construction workers not taking up public parking in other places, but also to help direct visitors to these other private sources. So those are ways in which we're trying to mitigate those concerns and have been talking with business owners in the affected areas as to how we can do that. We also stay in close contact with superintendents for the projects. We troubleshoot on a daily basis as these things are under construction and certainly parking is a concern, but there's other issues that come up during construction as well. So we're pretty actively involved in trying to mitigate across the board. And then finally, we have a pretty strong communications network. We have an incredible social media following, a great website. We just invested heavily in a new website that has a section specifically about parking and transit. So we're constantly trying to engage with the public and the business community about giving those resources for parking.
Thank you. All right, let's move along here. Next, we have Ms. Lisa Wood. If you could please come up and state your name and address.
Thank you for having us here today. My name's Lisa Wood. I reside at 41 West Second Avenue, so we're really not next to the project, we're catty corner. I'm just going to go over some numbers. The redeveloped site is going to include 12,000 square feet of commercial office space, 10,000 square feet of retail space, the 98 units, residential units. Per city code, that would require 312 parking spaces. So none of us understand how this gives us any public, doesn't give us enough for the development, let alone anything public. That's all I got.
All right. So if you're yielding the two and a half minutes left for us to have this conversation?
Sure.
Okay. So the parking in specific, we do need to drill down on this a little bit. And Mark or Steve, Mark?
Should I sit down?
You can stay if you'd like. It's really up to you. You can sit down, it's more comfortable. I'll call you back up.
But if you have other questions?
What?
If you have other questions or if you need me to repeat those numbers?
Yes, absolutely. So, Mr. Lundin, if you could, I know that the department has a parking study that you've done, that we've, the residents that are here today have seen and really feel like sort of doesn't do justice to the issue, but the department does have this study that the department feels does do justice to the issue. So if we could talk about that a little bit, the Nelson Nygaard Study.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Brown. As you alluded to, we, through the Short North Parking Study, had engaged a nationally renowned firm named Nelson Nygaard that performed the entire study and did physical counts on almost every street in the Short North at various times of day and night to understand the true utilization of both public and private parking in the neighborhood and came up with comprehensive recommendations that ranged from more efficient uses, as Betsy Pandora had articulated, of private lots, you know, varying models for public parking, as well as metered parking, the implementation strategy of partnering with private development, oversupply parking, as well as investments in transit and bike facilities that can encourage people to not use cars and get to the district in different ways. As the course of that study was wrapping up, we had begun to engage on these specific projects and had asked Nelson Nygaard, in the case of the White Castle project in specific, to run the usage numbers of the site relative to nationally recognized shared parking model that's done by the Urban Land Institute, that's really used across the country. And, you know, the maximum number of spaces needed at any given point in time during the week for this site, given the uses that are going into it, is 96 spaces. And they're providing 104 private spaces, so, you know, that covers their demand from the building itself. And then in addition, the oversupply of the 104 public spaces. So, you know, a little bit on how that works and kind of why that's different than the parking code that is in place for the City of Columbus today. As referenced before, the Short North is not in the urban commercial overlay and therefore it has parking requirements in city code that are the same as, you know, Sawmill Road or any other kind of non-overlay area in the city. So Short North clearly operates differently than that, is one of our most urban places. And, you know, it's typical for every development to get a parking variance, whether Italian Village or Victorian Village. So, you know, we, as the department, obviously feel that that needs to be addressed. We're in the process, through the Short North Parking Study, recommendations to relook at the parking code for the Short North and that's, I think, in draft form now in conjunction with Building and Zoning Services and Public Service. And so, you know, in the calculation, based on that model of a parking space for a commercial office being available 24 hours a day, seven days a week to those users, and then new parking spaces that are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week to the residents and such and such, it's not how practically people use parking. As you are an office worker, you know, typically you're there nine to five, Monday through Friday. A handful of people are, you know, maybe working on the weekends, would stay late at night, but it's a very small minority of people that are using those parking spaces. And so as we've seen downtown and in other places, the need to balance out use along with parking can optimize the resource. So, you know, we see downtown trying to encourage more residential as the parking garages are empty at night or, you know, more events during the weekends because there's so much parking available down here where it's constrained during the day, when we have so many office workers down here. And so trying to get that balance right is the goal of, you know, the shared parking approach. And again, the mix of uses in these buildings, we feel really is the new model on how construction will happen and how development will happen in the future where we can balance out these uses and, you know, maximize those spots so that, you know, we have public parking to provide, but we also don't leave parking sitting there empty, you know, large portions of the day.
I think it can be unnerving to kind of just trust in that model, right? Because, you know, the Short North is a really vibrant neighborhood and anyone who visits there, let alone lives there, understands that. So I just want to clarify with a couple of questions from what you just said. The folks that you brought in to do this parking study used a formula, you said that Urban Land Institute used, so they used a formula that's used in other cities. It's used on dense areas like the Short North?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Michael, or Councilmember Stenziano? Okay. All right. We are going to move on to the next witness, Jody Goldhand, if I'm reading the handwriting correctly. Is Ms. Goldhand here? Is Ms. Goldhand here? Okay. If she is not, I will call her name at the end in case she shows up. Shepard Terhune. Terhune. Oh, hello.
I think we can reach him. Oh, sure. Good afternoon and thank you, Council, for seeing us on, you know, it's Friday, so.
Thank you.
I know we all want to get out of here.
I don't.
Right? So, I moved into the short north in ninety-four in the corner of Star and High, as far as Star High Studios. It was part of the initial revamp of the neighborhood, basically, you know, from crack-filled, you know, buildings such as mine were when I first moved there and just how it's transitioned now on. And it's been always a nice gradual numbers game as far as the growth. It seems to be fantastically, it's always been measured. And now, we're having a huge growth, as is all of Franklin County. I mean, you drive anywhere from, you know, Gehanna to Dublin to, and nobody seems to have a handle on the parking or the traffic thing right now. It seems like a lot of these places got put up and kind of, I don't know if we have the infrastructure quite yet, you know? And I'm sure we'll catch up, you know? But in the meantime, while it doesn't, we're all kind of already, as far as just the neighborhood, the congestion just on the alley alone behind White Castle, and this is a huge transit area now, pretty much every night now that we have more of a campus, you know, crowd. I'm just kind of, it's going to add more congestion, which is great. I just want assurances that it's going to be, that we're going to kind of know what times are going to be constructing, not just myself, but we have a lot of people that need their rest, you know, due to health issues in our building where lower income. So, sadly, a lot of people are there all the time. A little worried about, the building itself is old, so we want assurances to make sure that we're not going to end up with flooded basement because that stuff already happens anyway. I remember when that parking lot was put in, that was kind of a nightmare, and that was just the parking lot with our building. And that's, and I know there's a, I think we've addressed that, or I hear there's, they're going to address that building and redo the brick, redo the grouting, so, you know, it's not going to fall down on us. But basically, I'm, sorry, this is kind of a, this morning, sure, I'll come say something. Basically, I just want to know that relatively quiet, I don't know if there's measures we can take as far as sound and noise for not just us, but the whole neighborhood. It seemed like the North Star building went up pretty quietly and quickly. I don't know what other, you know, problems will end up, you know, slowing or speeding up our building. Hopefully, it seems like it, you know, it looks, I, let me first say, I'm excited about it. You know, it's good to build up and not out, but as it is right now, I'm really concerned to where all these people are going to go. Yeah.
Thank you. And can you pronounce?
And that's not just parking, I'm sorry, but actually, literally, the alleys and the roads and, you know, are we going to lose some space there during this construction?
Sure. How do you pronounce your last name?
Terhune.
Terhune, okay. Thank you, Mr. Terhune. Could either Mr. Boer or someone from Boer Properties come up to speak to the concern about construction and just give us a brief, your perspective on how you're going to make sure there's some sanity in place for the neighborhood if this construction moves forward?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Sinziano. Jeff Bauer, I'm sorry, Executive Vice President with Boer Properties.
Thank you.
We're obviously concerned about that as well. An urban construction site is very difficult to manage. It's a tight site. We have hired a very experienced general contractor, Whiting Turner, to build the building for us. They have experience with doing projects like this in other markets. They did the Riverside Neuroscience Center, most recently here in town. We've examined the building that I think Mr. Terhune is talking about, and we're in close communication with the owner of that building to make sure that we don't violate any structure or anything there with that building. So, we've spent hours and hours on staging and construction and delivery and where we're going to put everything. And, you know, I think that we're going to obviously do the best that we can possibly do. We have, you know, locations for our construction workers to park, so, I mean, we're, I think, pretty much on top of that.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Bauer. I hope that that helped answer some of the questions, Mr. Terhune. Please feel free to be in touch with my office additionally if you need more information. We'll help get that to you. Thank you. Next, I'd like to move to Mr. Richard Jacob, please.
My name is Richard Jacob.
What? Uh-oh. If you could just state your name and your address.
My name is Richard Jacob. I live at sixty-one West Second Avenue in Columbus, Ohio. When I walked in City Hall, there's a sign that says, "The spirit of people define the spirit of the city." And that's kind of what I'm here to talk about in relation to these two projects. I represent the Short North group that has over three hundred members. They could not be here today because they work, and this open meeting to invite the citizens in to comment is impossible for them to be here. So, we're live broadcasting this meeting on Google, Google Hangout Plus, so people can be here. They can't talk to you, but they can see what's going on. And we think that an inclusive government, a good government, involves the people, not at the end when the decisions are already made, but in the beginning when the planning starts to take place and seeks their input all along the way, even though it's a little messier and it's a little harder, but it's the way governance should be. And we don't see that going on today. We see this meeting as an attempt, and we're sure you would rather have everybody be here, so we're trying to accommodate that. And I've got almost two minutes left, and I'm going to use it, if that's okay with I look at Short North as a treasure. I've been here for twenty-five years. And I see the developments that are going on, and we are so pro-development in our group. We're over three hundred members that think we should be developing the short north. You've heard the obvious, it's overdeveloped, the project's too massive. And you look at the Boer project, for example, it takes up an entire lot. There's no setbacks. There's only one way in or out of this project. It's off of West Second Avenue, which is a residential street, and you're turning it into a commercial thoroughfare. And we have seen the electric company come out and the city come out and check the sewer lines and move power lines and do all kinds of things in preparation for this project, which is not yet approved. And we wonder how that happens. And we think you should be asking those same questions. Because it's obvious to us that from the beginning, this was, let's do it, because development has done a great job convincing the city that it should be done, and the fix was in. And what we've been going through is almost a charade, and we're disappointed. We thought our government was better than that, and we look forward to you convincing us and demonstrating to us that it is. And I do thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jacob. What is the group that you?
It's called Save the Short North.
The three hundred members?
It has three hundred and thirteen members at this point, and it's growing every day.
Okay. I am sorry that you feel disappointed, and I definitely hear that. I'd like to remind you of what I said at the opening of this hearing, that there are several opportunities for sort of official public comment in these chambers, this being one. Once the legislation was introduced, we can hold a hearing on it once it's introduced. There is a first reading and there is a second reading of that legislation at a council meeting, which occurs at five o'clock on Mondays. And right now, we're expecting to hear the first reading this coming Monday and the second reading the following Monday on the twenty-third. So, to your Google Cast here, if there are other members who want to come after work hours, those are additional opportunities. And I also, I just want to disagree a little bit with you, sir, that we are not accessible because I sat around a table with many of you in this room in my second month of office along with colleagues and representatives from other colleagues' offices for, I think it was close to an hour and a half, to talk about this and to hear perspectives. And I know that we've been in conversation as well, members in our office, our staff members. So, I hope that we've proven we're accessible. I understand you still have frustrations, but I do just want to disagree a little, sir.
Point of clarification, we think you are accessible, but accessibility after the fact when a decision has been made is not the same as involvement in the beginning when the discussions start to take place.
Okay. No decision has been made yet. I will definitely assure you of that. I don't know if Mr. Sinziano, Councilmember Sinziano, has any comment additionally? Okay.
Thank you.
And does the department want to speak to this involvement issue as well?
No, I was just going to clarify something, and it's been brought up a couple of times about the utility work in the alley.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Honestly, the utilities are out there working on stuff that may not have anything to do with us at all. They may need.
They told us, they were told us they were there to get prepared for this project because they were directed to do that.
Perhaps by the private utility, but those are private utilities that may be doing survey work. It's not at the direction of the city. Yes, when we look at a project as we are getting ready, you would hope, I would think, that we would be doing some due diligence in terms of what it would take to make sure that Wall Street functions. We frequently say around the office that the two most important streets in the city are not high and broad, they are wall and pearl, because that is where what services high street happens. And so, we take, anytime someone has a development proposal, we take those two streets very, very seriously because they are the backbone of those neighborhoods. So, yes, we will have people out there surveying, understanding what is happening on the poles and in the ground because we can't move forward. I can't make a solid recommendation to this council without having people look at the technical aspects of those alleys.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to, well, I'm not going to be able to read this last name. It's, Mark is the first name, and you live at seventy-two West Second Avenue. And I apologize. And you have three minutes, sir?
Yes, all right. Time starting? Okay. Well, the short north is overdeveloped and the area is being trashed by overdevelopment. The filth of this White Castle project is astonishing to me. The city is giving away a parking lot, and there's generous, very super generous terms to the developers, and the area commission approved them not setting back on all the other developments have had to set back for good reason. That's not to dwarf the historic buildings. So, there is quite a double standard with these developers as compared to all these residents. When these residents want to do something to improve the neighborhood and their historic homes, they have to go through quite a rigor mortem. I can attest to that. I'm building a carriage house, and the area commission didn't like the garage door that I was going to have. I was going to have a double garage door so in the ice, when there's ice and snow, I could get into my garage. They put their boot on my throat and made me change that. But I don't see the area commission doing that with the developers. I see them getting zero clearance, not providing enough parking, not being even able to tell you how much parking they're providing because it depends on what time of day it is. That is ridiculous, and it's got to stop so that the neighborhood is not trashed. When these people buy homes, okay, they have to pay a lot of money for those homes, and they have to fix them according to the standards. You should not let developers apply to change these properties without making them provide underground parking garages so that they don't get their zero clearances and trash the neighborhood. I attended that parking meeting, and that was a farce. That was a complete sham. City Council or whomever has approved a parking firm to have a contract for life. Every year, they're going to monitor whether the side streets have eighty-five percent occupancy. They're going to triple the fees for permit parking on the residents, but they're so greedy that they're also going to allow visitors to park, so those poor residents probably won't get the parking spot that they paid for by the fees tripling.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark?
Excuse me, sir.
I never caught your last name. Just curious if you raised with the area commission the concern you raised with us today?
Well, yeah, and sir, that's where the city's not doing its job because the commission tells all these residents, "I'm sorry, we can't do anything about this. This is not part of the city. There's no city regulations to stop this." So, you know, these developers, they're going to be able to get zero clearance on parking, and we don't have a parking study that we can make them abide by, so, you know, just tough.
So, just to clarify, because you gave two examples that you thought the area commission was too lenient on the developers, but then tough when you wanted to have a double garage. In the one case, they're saying there is force, that the city has regulations, but in the other case, the area commission can't do anything because there's no procedures in place? I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, there's no parking plan, so they cannot dictate that developers, for instance, do underground parking garages, or they can't dictate, you know, that the trend is you give the developers, you know, zero clearance and you let, you know, you don't make them provide the adequate number of parking spots because that's just the way it is. Thanks.
Thank you. Everyone, do you, Director Shawne, do you want to say anything?
Just to clarify one point, I believe on this project, on the White Castle project, I believe the developer went back to the Victorian Village Commission, I think, seven times. Each of those times, the commission did have specific changes, I think, that were, maybe not each of those times, but there were significant changes that were made. The project was scaled back significantly from what the original plan was based on the feedback from the commission.
Next, I'd like to call Adam Shaw, please. How are you, Mr. Shaw?
First, I want to thank you for holding these hearings. I know we asked you about that, and you came through and did that for us as a community. We appreciate that. I guess what I want to say and look at is basically about the EDA and looking at the contract is the idea that a lot of this was already pre-planned. And I guess what I want to say is, we already know from being neighbors of this neighborhood for a long time. I'm fourth generation in the neighborhood. My father co-wrote the ordinance that created Victorian Village, so in talking to him as a founding father, I know what those guidelines mean. And my concern is, not only as a business next to this facility, is And my concern is, not only as a business next to this facility, is the fact that there's already standing ordinances and guidelines, that were clearly pushed by the city development department, knowing that they were oranges to apples. Meaning, they already knew that the buildings had to be proportionate to the buildings surrounding them. But the city department, economic development, has pushed that through, saying, "Not in this particular case." We've already had that raised at a Victorian Village Commission meeting, and they were concerned about the height. We know everybody asked for 11 stories, we were told that, they know they're not going to get 11, so when they come down to nine or eight, it seems like it's more doable, and usually that's what the plan is. Fact is, there really shouldn't be an EDA, because we know this isn't a blighted neighborhood. We know the developer doesn't need funds from taxpayers, that's what the bank's for, and they can get that. A million dollars isn't going to really do anything. And I've been at that property since 1920, White Castle's been there since 1950. I could say the same thing. Why don't you enter agreement with me? I can tear down my outbuildings, and I can easily put a parking garage. Fact is, is that there are other parties that are interested, that have never been asked or brought into any meetings. The agreement that we finally got, the EDA, we found out was done in April of 2015. We didn't receive it until April 2016. Of course, being alerted by you, we weren't aware of it either, that's how we were able to get our hands on it, to see that there was money that was also going to be, in addition to the property. I mean, we want development, don't get me wrong. I want to see the community continue to grow, and I'd love to have more parking. But you're right, the numbers don't add up. And during the construction, it's going to be difficult for those businesses to survive, especially as the IBEW is now in contract, and that'll be gone. So, and looking at parking studies, and living in the area, and seeing it increase, is a godsend. We're a blessed story that most communities only dream of, whether it's Old Town East, Italian Village, all the way back to, if you look at Northland Mall area. Everybody wants our success. And I think the issue is, is that we're overdeveloping this, we're stacking people on top of one another. But the real thing I want to discuss is the fact that this agreement was already done, it was put together by the economic development, there is no blight, there is no reason for economic development. And let me just finish with this. The variances, the setbacks, the height, was being pushed by city employees and administrators, when they knew the guidelines, and the ordinance said it had to be proportionate to the buildings surrounded. And we have those individuals that are pushing for that, knowing it violates the law, therefore the EDA is null and void, doesn't meet the criteria, even to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Do you have anything before I? So, I want to quickly speak to the, and EDA is, an EDA is not entered into because an area has blight. An EDA is entered into because it's a public-private partnership. So, I understand your broader point about maybe the aspects of the deal, but the fact that there is an EDA department, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's common practice for any public-private partnership in anywhere in the city?
Thank you, Councilmember. Yes, anytime we enter into a contract with anyone, public or private, we have to enter into a contract and bring that to council if it's over $20,000. To this, as I said earlier, the, what requires the blight finding is the community reinvestment area incentive, which was not negotiated as part of this, that is something that council put in place, and I can't even remember when that was put in place. And was not part of this EDA. What is part of this EDA is the purchase of public parking. That is the fundamental exchange of money in this one, it's for the additional spaces that are not needed to service the development.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, the property tax abatement tied to residential development?
Yes.
It is basically a kind of by right abatement tied to a geography, put in place after state legislation enabled it, put in place in the 80s, early 90s?
I believe that's correct. And the short north CRI was put in place before my time and before Mark's time, and I'm terrible with remembering dates, so I don't want to give a specific date on that, but yes.
Okay. And that is separate, that is not something that we enter into an agreement with the developer on?
It is not.
What we are focused on, and it is because of the way the program is set up?
Yes.
State legislation dictates it that way?
Yeah.
Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, but when we're talking about other abatements within the EDA, we're talking about office abatements?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I also want to, I very much understand your perspective, Mr. Shaw, that this feels like, you know, decisions were, and Mr. Jacob said this too, that decisions were already made, and, you know, there is no input. I really want to stress that no decisions have been made, that an agreement about what a project could look like, and what city participation could be, the Department of Development is an entity separate from council, and they are engaged in those conversations on an ongoing basis. And their only incentive is something that is a win for the city. We may disagree about what a win is, but I do want to just clarify that these gentlemen, and mostly their team members too, they're not negotiating on something because they have some secret ulterior motive. Their ulterior motive is, and I know this from working with them on a daily basis, is a win for the city. I understand that that win is defined differently by a lot of different people, but there are no, I felt like some of your comments were maybe a little cynical about intention or something, and I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
I don't have power to comment.
Okay.
All I'm just saying was, the city, it's pushing through an agreement that's contrary to the ordinance of the city, that already includes variances that have setbacks without other input.
Yeah.
Without other input, before going through to the Board of Zoning, or even having discussions with city council to see what's, what I'm saying is, it's already pre-planned. I'm not saying it's some ulterior motive or some conspiracy, I'm just saying that, and if I may address, they are moving the telephone wire lines, because they told us that our business would be down without power. So, the power lines have already been moved from that side of the street, they actually have cut the tops of the power, the telephone poles down, to force the cable companies to come and move their wires to the other side of Wall Alley. So, somebody had to give them permission to do that. I talked to the foreman, the supervisor, when he came over to tell us that the power would be out. Matter of fact, there was a city employee there from the sewer at the same time, because they said it would take about 15 minutes, and the guy from the city laughed, and it took about a couple hours. Of course, the power went out to the neighbors across the street. So, all I'm just saying is that, that's not accurate. And I was there for that conversation, to be advised that the power was going to be switched. They said there was a development that was coming, and they had to move all the power lines to the other side of the street.
Okay.
But, I guess my point is, I'm trying to make, maybe I'm not making it clear enough, is that, again, the city employees have entered into this EDA with a developer that already has...
I'm sorry, I'm going to clarify with you that we've not entered into any EDA.
Okay. They promoted an EDA that is contrary to the guidelines and to the ordinance of the city of Columbus. It's not proportionate to the buildings around it. And I understand they can give special favor, okay? But that's not what we're seeing in this case, because there's other things that go hand in hand with that, whether it's setback lines, whether it's variances, whether it's no loading zone, whether it's limited parking. We're seeing all those things that were already in plan, that was being pushed, let me just say, the city was there to help during the Victorian Village Commission, to help say, "We're in this deal with them."
Yeah, the department, I mean, the department's recommendation is what is contained in the EDA. So, you are right, that is what occurred. Director Shoney?
To clarify, we felt it was important for the department to be at the Victorian Village Commission, as part of the BOR and White Castle presentation, because they were proposing a project on our land. And obviously, we had discussions with them about their intent. However, I will tell you, we remained very neutral on the aspects of the project that we liked, and the aspects of the project frankly, that we didn't like from a design standpoint. And actually, I've never said in front of the developers until right now, that there were some aspects of the project, but from a design standpoint, we felt could be better. But we know that there is a very robust process with the Victorian Village Commission, that they take that very seriously. And we did not want to bias that process. Granted, understood, when we say we're in a project, there is a perceived, there will be a perception that because we are participating with them on the land deal, that obviously we have some support, and we do have support for the project. We would not have entered into the project if we did not think it could be a good project at this point. We do think it's a good project, otherwise we would not be bringing this recommendation to council. And it is a very, it's something we try to treat with the greatest of respect as we go through the process. Because I do understand that these perceptions will be there anytime we step in. Nonetheless, our job is to work to ensure that we get the best development we believe that we can for the city. In this case, I think we've gotten that. And we have tried to navigate the process as faithfully as we could.
All I would say in response to that is, I understand that they need the city's involvement to create this project, I get that. Again, even though the commission approved it, and they did tell us on record that they were mandated by the city for these large projects, it still violates the ordinance that's set for that area. I think that should be a big consideration. You know, it's mass, that is out of proportion. Anyone I show, or that comes, or they ask me about it, they all say the same thing. It's huge, it's the Goliath amongst the neighborhood. And what's the point? And I said, "I don't know. I don't know why it's so large." And then they say, "Well, what's historical about it?" I said, "Nothing. Nothing."
Okay.
So, the points I'm trying to make is, I understand the city has to find developers to do deals. I got that from Councilman Harding, and I agree with that. We need private development help. The fact is, is this project the right project for the area with its architecture and its mass? Now, Victorian Village, they have already given them a green light, but still, we believe that there's a violation of those ordinances, based on it has to be conforming to the, proportionate in size to the buildings around it. That's four stories, maybe five, if you stretch it. Eight's huge.
I hear you, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you.
And do you have anything, Councilmember Sinziano? And I know that the conversation at Victorian Village Commission was robust and repeated, and that all of these things were wrestled with, and that we have a lot of issues to wrestle with here at council, too. So, thank you for coming, and thank you for operating your business in the short north for 96 years.
Our original storefront is the Short Mark Tavern, and that was in 1907. We moved the Short Mark Tavern to our current location in 1919.
Well, thank you for operating your business for 109 years, then. Yeah.
I do have a quick follow-up, just to the point that he raised with the area commission. High Street corridor has different guidelines than Victorian Village, is that correct? I'm not sure you're the right department, but I believe I've heard that in the past, and I wasn't at those meetings.
Right department, perhaps wrong individuals?
I know how that goes every day.
Yes, there are different standards for High Street than for the interior of Victorian Village. One small point of clarification, and I'll quickly get outside my depth of expertise on this. There are standards, by law, we're required to have a variance process. The Victorian Village Commission is fundamental to that variance process, and then it goes to Development Commission after that, for final approval of variant, of this kind of variance. So, while it may be contrary to the plan and the current zoning to do this, it is not, to my understanding, against the law, just as a point of clarification.
Yeah, thank you. So, we have one witness left, but I don't know whether she wants to testify again. You'd signed up for both projects, Betsy Pandora? Do you want, or you said your piece? Okay. All right, well, that brings us to the, oh, actually, did Jody Goldhand ever come? Yes, great. Thank you for waving in the back and reminding me, I said I do that. Ms. Goldhand, you have three minutes, and if you could please say your name and your, hi again, and your address?
Hi, I'm Jody Goldhand, and I live at 90 West Second. And like the rest of my neighbors, I'm strongly in favor of developing this site, and I am even in favor of incentives for proper development. But we have, you know, a tax abatement, which I think is an incentive, and we have clearly a lot of interest in developing in the neighborhood. And I think that incentives need to be used wisely, because as Steve told me when I first talked to him, and as has been repeated here, you know, resources are limited. I ride my bike down that alley, which is filled with potholes every day, and often, filled with people searching the trash cans for their next meal, or sleeping on the alley itself. I know resources are limited. So, we need to use our resources extremely wisely. And I don't see how we are doing that by giving a very valuable piece of land and a million dollars to build a development that is not giving back to the community. I think there is a development there that could give back. I think they could have put parking, you know, one layer down, as they're doing in the Arena District, and the University District, and Upper Arlington. I think they could have helped the neighborhood, they still can help the neighborhood, by timing their construction, so that the park, the public parking lot stays alive until the new public parking lot is available. I think they could help the neighborhood by not asking for a variance in excess of the number of parking spaces they're actually providing. I think there's lots of things they could do to help the neighborhood. I don't think that it was a material change in the project to bring it down to nine stories, which is as tall as anything in the neighborhood. It doesn't bring it down to be consistent with the neighborhood, and it doesn't make it not a barrier to the neighborhood and the people who are spending so much and paying, you know, seven times the amount of taxes that I paid when I came here. And we are giving, by giving a tax abatement, a huge benefit for development. I think we need to think, in the long run, about how we smooth that out, so that it doesn't hurt the developers, and it doesn't hurt the owners when it expires. Right now, it expires like, on a day, and then, you know, it's going to be very difficult to not give an extension, because of what happens when things expire on a day. And that was, you know, bad planning, and I think it needs to be addressed as soon as possible. But I think that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Goldhand. Your point about, and you can sit down, that's fine, your point about the incentives is well-taken, and I think that you may not have been here yet, but I wanted to make sure you knew, Director Shoney talked about something I'm really excited to see the department doing, which is a wholesale review of our incentives, and really taking a look at what's happening in Columbus. We have a great real estate market, so we want to make sure that we're still making it a place that's attractive for developers to develop, because that's a good thing for our city, but also that we are being good stewards of the public dollar, so that that deal is right for everyone. And I'm very much looking forward to the department doing that work. Thank you, Director Shoney. I am going to close things out, but give Councilmember Sinziano a chance to say something if he wants before.
I just wanted to thank everyone for your participation and for coming down here. I think the chair has been very clear, decisions haven't been made. There are a process, I have talked to a couple of the neighbors, though, of what I look to within that process, but really appreciate you coming, always raising valid points, and really just appreciate everyone's participation today, in previous discussions, and going forward. If there are ever any questions of utility things, as Chair of Utilities, I hope folks feel free to pick up the phone, we can get answers for you. Or if there are other concerns about alleys and roads, there's other members that chair those committees, that we also want you to know that we are here. that we are here to work through any questions, concerns, or issues. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone for coming today. Thank you, um, to the department. Um, you've- you've, uh, helped us with a lot of questions here today. Um, I want to reiterate to those who are in the audience and those who are watching that, um, the department is a- is an open book. Please call them if you have further questions about what you heard them say. Also, please call me, um, if you have further questions as well. Uh, we- we are still engaged in a conversation about this. I very much want to stress that. Um, thank you so much to all the residents who came and, um, spent your time uh, talking to us about, um, issues that matter a lot. Um, thank you, Councilmember Sinziano, obviously, for being here. And a really big thank you again to my team, to Kelsey Ellingson and James Carmin, who worked very hard, um, to make sure, uh, this all went without a hitch. I want to remind everybody of the- the timeline. Um, the, again, the- the legislation hit our agenda yesterday as official legislation. We've held this hearing today. On Monday, you will see first the first reading for these economic development agreements at our regular council meeting, which is Monday at five o'clock. On the following Monday, we expect to, please confirm on the agenda, don't take my word for it if it's delays another week, but we fully expect that, um, the second reading will be up, um, that following Monday, the twenty-third, when you will, um, actually see a vote on the legislation. There's no vote on first reading. It's simply to get it into the system. Um, so both of those meetings are this coming Monday and then the next Monday at five o'clock. Um, and lastly, I just want to close by saying that, uh, the- these- these projects that we're talking about here today, um, and the general topic of the short north, it means a lot to me. I'm a resident of the neighborhood. I've been a resident of the neighborhood since I moved back to Columbus after college, well, a little after college, but, um, since I moved back to Columbus. My husband and I bought our first home in the neighborhood, um, which is where we live currently with, um, our baby. And these decisions that, um, council has in front of us, we don't take lightly in any neighborhood of the city, but I do want to say, um, you know, I have a- I have a special appreciation for the passion that was brought here today because it's about a neighborhood that matters a great deal to me. So, um, thank you very much to all of you, and, um, with that, I'll close.